This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tewol?
Here.
Von Hayden?
Here.
John?
Here.
Oh, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, July 26 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this duty by conducting public hearings and public discussions, by reading the considerable amount of materials in our council packet, and by working with staff and citizens. We are now ready to fulfill our responsibility. We do welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers this afternoon and to those watching or streaming on community television, to whom we are grateful for broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. Council does have important items on its agenda this afternoon, so let us begin. But before we get to our work, a little message to my fellow council members. You can see that we only have seven council members in attendance tonight, seven of the eleven of us. We do have a quorum, so we can conduct our business, but some items, I thought perhaps it would be important to review the voting process when we only have seven members present. So I asked Mr. Nick to help us out with a little overview. Mr. Nick.
The unique issues will certainly pop up on Items 17 and 18. Both are budget amendments, so they require two-thirds, and it's two-thirds of a fixed number, namely, the entire council. So you require eight votes. You don't have that present. I would suggest motions to postpone until your next meeting on both. For all other items, all other business agenda items, and the one ordinance item you have for action, those require a majority of the entire council or six for adoption. And then should there be any amendments or other parliamentary motions, such as the motion to postpone that I had referenced earlier, those are a simple majority of those present in voting. So on things like the amendment or motion to postpone, you'd need, you have seven. If everyone's voting, four of the seven would allow those to pass. But again, especially when we're in our smaller numbers, you have something that, you know, you can amend something with four votes, but it, you know, it might not pass unless you get six. So, you know, again, I would just suggest if you find yourself in those sort of issues, I don't know if you will, you know, on the agenda today, but, you know, that's where you may need to consider a motion to postpone until you've got the full body or something closer to it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nick. Did that clarify any questions? Okay. Let's get on with our work, then, which begins with the consent agenda. Councilmembers have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? On a motion then by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. I do have one proclamation today, and I'm going to ask Kyle Roder to meet me at the podium. It's easier.
I'm sorry I didn't introduce you.
That's our carrier.
Oh. We'll make sure that Mr. Roder...
I didn't want to be alone.
Okay. Well, the three of us will stand on here together. As you know, I usually read parts of the proclamation and give people a chance to think about what you might, some words you might have for us this afternoon. So I'll begin with an edited version of the proclamation in front of you. The National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a nationwide crime and drug prevention program called National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime, which provides a unique opportunity for the city of Eau Claire to sponsor its 22nd annual Night Out on Crime event on Tuesday, August 2 at Owen Park. The purpose of the event is to promote cooperative police-community crime prevention and healthy community efforts in Eau Claire. And the Eau Claire Parks and Rec Department, the YMCA, Eau Claire Neighborhoods play a vital role in assisting the Eau Claire Police Department by supporting a healthy and safe community through joint crime and drug prevention efforts. Therefore, the city council does proclaim Tuesday, August 22 as National Night Out on Crime. Officer Roder.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you for the proclamation, and this is our 22nd year in Eau Claire hosting the National Night Out event, and it's an event that's not only made up, it's not an Eau Claire police fun event, so it's a community event. And we work with Parks and Rec and other sponsors, the Children's Museum, the YMCA, as well as some businesses that are helping with food and entertainment. So it's a night to come out. We'll have a number of officers there, and we will have police vehicles from all over, as well as some, even some fire trucks. So we try to make this a big community event, and we typically get between 1,200 and 1,500 people. So we encourage anybody that can come out to come out and enjoy themselves. And obviously, as police officers, we're open to communicating with the public at any time, but this gives it a little bit easier opportunity for people to approach us and things. So we appreciate your support with that. Thank you.
And did you want to introduce?
This is Carrie Autumn with Parks and Rec, and she's really taken over this year as coordinating it, and she's done a great job, so...
Excuse me. Can you ask her?
No. Again, as Kyle said, this is a community partnership, and we've tried to provide a friendly, fun atmosphere for the community to get to know their police officers and emergency vehicles. So if there ever is a time where a child needs to approach a firefighter or a police officer, they feel comfortable doing that. So as Kyle said, you know, you're more than welcome to come and maybe see Kyle in the dunk tank and splash him a couple times. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you both. Yes.
So now, Officer Roder, you are going in the dunk tank. It's been said in public, so that's the end of that. Let's see. We can start our business agenda now with Item 16, a resolution granting a temporary expansion of a Class B fermented malt beverage license to Hanger 54 Grill, which is located at the airport terminal. Actually, we're granting an expansion of their license. Ms. Stromberger.
Thank you. As you stated, this is a temporary expansion for a Class B fermented malt license that was granted to Hanger 54 Grill, which is the restaurant at the airport. They are hosting the Chamber After Hours event that's regularly held there, hosting on August 4. The applicant appeared at License Review. They expect about 300 people to attend at License Review. They had no objection to checking IDs and applying wristbands at the door, and the door will be the south side entrance of the airport. The other entrances will be locked. Beer will be served in different colored glasses or bottles, and at least four licensed bartenders will be on site. And License Review Committee had no objections to granting the expansion as it was presented.
Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. I see the applicant is standing behind you. I often give the applicant a chance to talk about their, an event such as this one, or I understand that we have a new, not a new venue, but a new applicant, so...
Correct.
With your permission, I'll ask the applicant to say a few words.
It wasn't a whole lot. We just had, we had one liner thing. As far as the wristbands go, it's going to be a 21-plus event to all the chambers. When they get there, they pay the admission, everything like that. We were wondering if we could forego with the wristbands. All of our licensed bartenders, I mean, that's what we're trained to do, is to check IDs for people who look underage and everything like that. And in the past, I know that they've never had to use the wristbands. So we're just wondering if that'd be okay with you guys, to kind of leave it up to our bartenders and our staff there, selling the alcohol, because not everybody that comes in is going to, is going to order an alcoholic beverage and everything like that. So I guess I don't know how that works exactly, but...
We'll talk about that for a little bit.
Okay.
And starting by, maybe, Ms. Stromberger, or I see Ms. Winkie is in the audience, and she has hosted the event before. It might be helpful for us to hear a little bit about what's happened in the past and how the event unfolds.
This event happens every year, as long as I've been there for 15 years. We either have it at the airport itself or at the, what used to be Heartland Aviation, now Hawthorne Aviation. In the past, there was, the restaurant and bar in the airport had the license for the entire space, so we didn't have that issue. But we have had it over at Hawthorne, where we did have to get a license, and even last year. And in that situation, we had the signage up, you know, no one under 21 years of age is admitted. We do that at all of our events that are not, do not have a liquor license. We've never had a situation in the past where we've had a problem with that. And so the wristband, I'm sorry I was not at the prior meeting, but I guess we were wondering if we could bypass that.
And the applicant's, oh, I can ask Ms. Stromberger. Does anyone have questions for?
The question I'm asking, did they use wristbands last year?
We did not, no.
Okay, so this is the first time the request?
This is the first time, yes.
Okay. That's what I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, it is in a confined area, and similar to business after hours that are held in locations without licenses where a nonprofit would come in. We have the signage up, and we have not used wristbands at any of those events either.
Are there primary, I am assuming, basis, this Chamber After Hours, that the majority of the people are over 21?
It is only open to chamber member businesses. In this situation, it is Chippewa Falls, Menominee, and Eau Claire, but we do have the signage that says no one under 21 years of age can be admitted.
Thank you both. Ms. Stromberger, did you have any other comments after?
I guess it's nothing that we heard at License Review. Had it been presented, we certainly would have considered that. This was a new application. It's the first time an expansion has been asked for in the terminal. So for us, it's a brand-new event, and certainly wristbands are nothing out of the ordinary. At prior chamber events, something like hand stamps have been required, so it's not unheard of at an event like this.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Stromberger? I see none. Oh, Councilmember Von Hayden?
Based on your experience with these, is there a problem with eliminating the wristbands because of the nature of the event?
I guess I would say it's probably a low-risk event, but I, in my experience, better safe than sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. So the resolution before us is on, oh, excuse me, I have to just get to it. Sorry. There's a resolution before us that refers to the application, so we would have to amend the resolution a little bit by not requiring wristbands, which is somewhere in the application. So if there are no further questions, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, Item 16 is moved, and discussion or amending is in order. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's a reasonable, I'd like to amend the application to say that wristbands will not be required.
A motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, to eliminate the requirements for wristbands. Discussion on the motion to amend? All those in, oh, did you have a discussion? Oh, Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this falls under the spirit of trying to make Eau Claire as a city, an event-friendly city, and that there are certain times where the council and staff and the applicants can work together to find kind of the common sense approaches and solutions. So I think this certainly falls under this. I certainly think there are events that are incredibly important to have wristbands and to have a higher monitoring, and that would make a whole lot more sense. So this is not a blanket endorsement for wristband abolishment. I think it makes sense for this situation.
And further discussion? All those in favor then of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? And were you aye?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I heard something. We're back to the resolution then on page 56 as amended. Is there further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Item 17 is a resolution to authorize some appropriation adjustments to the 2016 operating budget. As we alluded to earlier, this is one of the items that would require eight votes to pass. There aren't eight of us here, so a motion to postpone would certainly be in order. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move that we postpone this item due to not having eight votes, and I can speak to that in a moment.
Seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I think council as a body has given itself a professional courtesy if there are kind of a significant number of people who are gone, and I think this item, since we're only talking about this item, I'll keep my comments to this item, merits postponement.
And further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The motion to postpone passes. Item 18 is a similar, an item, a resolution authorizing participation in the XL Energy Solar Connect program and appropriating funds. Again, an item requiring eight votes, not having eight members present, a motion to postpone may be in order. Councilmember Beaton?
I move to postpone this item.
And it's seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, and discussion is in order. All those in favor of the motion to postpone signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to Item 19 on our agenda is a resolution approving a $5,000 contribution toward the Clear Vision Poverty Summit. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam President. About 10 years ago, a series of, a group of citizens got together and formed an organization called Clear Vision in Eau Claire, and they actually worked with about 500 different stakeholders to engage the community for the common good. And they took on a whole series of projects in, you know, as a, as a community engagement group, worked on Community Day at the Community Table, the Community Gardens, they were instrumental in forming the Sojourner House, and also actually very instrumental in the Confluence Project. And they became a model for civic engagement that actually has won several awards. They kind of, a little quiet for a little while, but have re-engaged, and they're launching a multi-year poverty summit. And what they want to do is engage the broader community in really talking about and identifying and doing some problem-solving around the issue of poverty. They're going to hold seven public stakeholder workshops and develop a five-year action plan to talk about, you know, poverty in our community. When they did their initial work 10 years ago, the city and the county contributed to that effort, and I think we've seen the fruits that came out of that. And again, they've made a request for the city to help with this summit. The county is already moving forward with their contribution. They've asked for a $5,000 contribution from the city and a $5,000 contribution from the county. This is going to be used as a match for the ASH Award for Innovation in Government, which was a $10,000 award that they received. It would be coming from our non-department account, which I believe will have enough to make this work for the year. And that would certainly entertain any questions you might have on the resolution before you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Councilmember Strobel has a question?
Oh, thank you. I had a couple of questions on this one, I think. The, the money that they're using here, they're going to have seven, seven workshops, it says, just community workshops. Does it, I mean, they're talking about $20,000 here. That money's obviously not going to be used to hold a workshop, or, and then it also says it may be used for the subsequent work plan, so I guess, what is, what is the money being used for?
So primarily, it's going to be used for, you know, when you're coordinating and pulling together that many people, you have to rent a space, you have to, you know, just the expenses of, you know, engaging that kind of a community discussion. They're also going to be hiring a part-time person to help, you know, with some of the facilitation, and then writing the reports and pulling all the ideas together. So it's primarily administrative expenses in the process of holding the discussions.
And a follow-up there, and what, what do you suppose the city's involvement will be then after that? What type of things might come of this that the city would be asked to participate in?
Frankly, I don't know that we know that, and that's part of the discussion, is to see, you know, where, what, you know, if you look at the outcomes for this, there are two outcomes that the folks that are working on putting this together. One is they want to be able to, in a very concrete way, try to reduce the number of individuals and families that are living in poverty. And the second outcome is to build a more resilient, thriving, and inclusive communities, you know, that empower citizens to act. So, you know, what that may mean for us in terms of requests coming back, I believe it's really a little too early to tell, and even if there'll be any direct, you know, request from the city. If you look at some of the other activities they've been involved with, you know, from, you know, work with the Community Gardens or the Sojourner House, you know, that's had some involvement for us, and of course, the Confluence Project had, you know, very direct involvement for us. So a little too early to tell, you know, where that might be. And I think that's somewhat intentional at this point, because the idea of pulling the stakeholders together to identify the issues and what we can do as a community is really a blank slate that, you know, we want to pull those, to get those people together and see what those ideas might be.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Dale, do you have any idea how much additional funds beyond the $20,000 between the city, county, and the ASH that they're looking at in their budgets?
I think they'd like to have another $10,000 to $15,000 that they're trying to raise, you know, from the, from the private sector and others.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Peters? Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
And on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Tewol, Item 19 is moved, and discussion is in order. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had the opportunity to serve as a volunteer on an initiating committee that is helping to lead the Poverty Summit over the next couple of years. And some of the things that are so striking to me include that this is a diverse and a multi-generational approach that the organization is looking to take. And we have a community that certainly is multi-generational, and we are working on making sure we're including more voices, and we talk here as a body of the importance of civic engagement. I think this is a very meaningful way that we can put some real muscle behind the existing work and the work that's to become in front of us. I appreciate the organic nature of this, that as of today, there's no direct answers to what may come or what may not come out of this. As a policymaker, I hope to learn a little bit more on how can we maybe make some capital improvement project decisions more strategically? How could this body maybe change some procedures on streamlining and making all of, all of our little arrows that go forward work in synchronization a little more tightly? Aside from my affection for this, I just wanted to share something that Peter Levine, who's a director of a program out in Boston, who studies cities and civic organizations, what he said about Clear Vision. Says Americans concerned about civic renewal and democracy are watching Eau Claire, which is already regarded as a leader in constructive civic work. Clear Vision Eau Claire is an impressive next step that will set the standard for other American cities. And I'm hopeful that this passes tonight, and I hope that we can be a part of setting that standard, that communities take on difficult and complicated issues, and we're ready to do the work.
Thank you. Further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 20 is a resolution approving the final plat for Trillium Estates located on the north side of County Trunk Highway II East of 93. Mr. Tufti?
This is the property located east of Highway 93, which is south of the city, north of II, in the town of Washington. And the plat comes in two pieces, and if you take the time to piece it together, it'll look like that. And on every thread button, there we go. Again, 93 and II. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, which was approved by the Plan Commission. Under the terms of the agreement we have with the town and our subdivision code, the property is allowed a density standard of two lot, or one lot per two acres. That would provide 39 lots for this property. It has 38 developable lots and then a large outlot along, around a wetland area. The Plan Commission did recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none. Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, Item 20 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 21 is a resolution approving the sale of Lot 8 in Sky Park to Advanced Engineering Concepts. Mr. Schatz?
The area in orange is Lot 8. It's about eight tenths of an acre, and Advanced Engineering would like to purchase that at the going Sky Park rate of $22.5 an acre, which would translate to a sale of $18,000 based on the size of the lot. They would construct a 3,200-square-foot building. Plan Commission has approved the site plan, and the proceeds of the sale would go into the city's Economic Development Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. I see that Councilmember Von Hayden has a question.
The question that I have is the price per acre. Now, as I understand this, is that the covenants out there were amended, so office buildings can now go in there at the same price that we normally would sell for industrial lots. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was amended a couple of years ago, and I think Mr. Tufti outlined in an email or a memo last, last meeting that that was the policy, that it was a approved use. It is a use that's allowed in Sky Park, and that's why it's at the same price.
Okay, so it, it doesn't have to be where they're bringing in, I realize that this company's bringing some jobs in from Altoona, which is great, but I just wanted to clarify that any office business or of that nature now could make application for a lot out there at... application for a lot out there at the industrial rate.
Any allowed use that's in the covenants could do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. I see no further questions. On a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, item 21 is moved, and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden? Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
It brings to an end our business agenda for the afternoon. We do have one ordinance for action, and ordinance, item 23 is an ordinance amending section 9.32.40 entitled Firearms Restricted in Certain Buildings. Ms. Stromberger.
Thank you. And this is an ordinance to amend the definition of knives that are prohibited in city buildings. You may or may not be aware, state law changed earlier this year regarding the possession of switchblades is now legal in the state of Wisconsin. However, the city retains authority to prohibit the possession of switchblade knives. It's in city buildings. The ordinance, as it's currently written, permits switchblade knives in the, in city buildings, so this amendment would make them prohibited.
Questions for Ms. Stromberger? Do we have to change our little signs?
I don't believe so.
I think there's a knife on them.
I'm not sure what they currently look like.
Mr. Nick.
Yeah, if I could briefly clarify, the situation was, switchblades previously were understood to be illegal, so they weren't expressly prohibited, or in fact, what we did is we exempted them from the definition of dangerous weapons that we were using because they were actually criminal to hold them. Now that they're no longer criminal and the reference we were making isn't in the statute anymore because they're legal to possess, we've got to update the code. So we've always prohibited knives, including switchblade knives, from our buildings, and our signs do indicate no weapons with both firearms and knives. But again, just because of that statutory change, we need to make a little bit of a language change to adjust.
Thank you, Mr. Nick, and Ms. Stromberger. Questions? I see none.
Thank you.
On a motion, and by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item 23 is moved, and discussion is in order. We could say the obvious, but we'll let it pass. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewol?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. We do have one ordinance for introduction tonight. Next meeting, we'll be taking up an ordinance to amend the composition of members, composition of members, yeah, to various boards and committees, and the dissolution of the Special Assessment Review Committee. Councilmembers wish to suspend the rules and take up this item tonight. Seeing no such desire, announcements and directives are in order. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. The only announcement we have tonight is just to remind you that we have a tour of the wastewater treatment plant immediately following this. It is a facility that I think we all take for granted when we flush the toilet. We want it to go down. We've made millions of dollars in investment, and as our former Public Works Director used to say, "We want to be number one in the business of number two." And we would be proud to show off this new facility to you, and we hope that you can join us for the tour.
Here, here, Mr. Amundson. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I might need an efficient wastewater treatment plant for my next chapters in my life. My family will be expanding, and I'll be having a baby this November, and so hopefully, when we're potty-training, everything flows very smoothly in more ways than one. I just wanted to share the news with the public, as I do take my public service and attendance here very seriously, and it will be a race of, does the baby come first, or do we pass a budget? We'll see. Stay tuned.
I'm not sure if one claps after such an announcement, but we're going to clap. To my knowledge, it's the first time we will have a newborn on council, not, you know, sitting on council, but it's exciting. And of course, we wish you and your family the very, very best. We'll help you all we can. Okay? Other announcements? There being none, on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, there being no further business to come before this body, we adjourn without objection.
This was a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council meeting. This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support.